Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. We have our folks in person. And thank you for all those folks on Zoom. And we have Sarah Perrin, our board member, on Zoom, too. So, thank you. It's tough thinking about how to open this meeting this evening after last week. So, we are heartbroken as we gather this evening on the loss of our Darien High School student, Hayden Thorson. Our thoughts, prayers, and love are with his parents, Sarah and Rob, and his sister, Elka, and his family and friends. We mourn as a community, and I would ask for a moment of silence to remember this incredible young person. As a community, we are mourning this unthinkable loss, and we continue to mourn and pray for the farmer and McAvoy families. Our community has been shaken by these tragedies to the core. And in speaking to professionals, friends, and medical professionals, we must realize we're a community in crisis. As a community in crisis, we come together to support the families that have lost so much, and to comfort and wrap our arms around them, and also those that are feeling the pain of this loss: our students, teachers, administrators, friends, families, and all members of the community that support us. I am not surprised by the outpouring of support and caring that is happening almost every minute of every day. The phone calls, emails, and support that are circulating throughout the community truly define us in terms of what we do and what we represent as a community. The district and the board will continue to support whatever the needs of our students, their families, and our community are. Calls and meetings have been taking place with our First Selectmen, our Health Department, emergency services, our religious leaders, business and community leaders, and also the incredible community organizations like the Community Fund and the Darien Depot that do so much to support our town. I also had a special reach out from folks, Peter Ophanos, the RTM. And the RTM is issuing a statement in Unity to do whatever is needed, RTM, RTM Education, and RTM F&amp;B, to support whatever the needs of the district and the community are. And I appreciate that. We appreciate that. Dr. Adley will provide more information on his calls with the state and the district's work with professionals that will be needed to do the work ahead of us. When I finish these remarks, we will amend the agenda for a speaker we will have later in the meeting. We have an immediate need for our students, family, and staff, and we will build a plan around that and for the end of the school year that's fast approaching. We will look at what our needs are for our students and community over the summer and define a plan for the new school year. The beginning of the school year has to look different than what it has traditionally looked like before. While being recognized as the leading high school in the state and ranked nationally, our focus must be on the whole health of our students: their mental, social, emotional, and physical health and well-being. Being number one in academics or sports, recognized as leaders in music, theater, clubs and councils, having the best facilities, all means nothing if the anxiety, stress, pressure, and culture to constantly compete and win leads to a breakdown in the mental and physical health of our students and leads to suicides. It's a tough word to hear. It's a tough word to understand. The medical folks and the mental health professionals I've talked to said we need to use that word. I want to also recognize the administration and the Darien High School team for their around-the-clock support this weekend in making sure our students and families had access to the school and professionals there to support us. The town, our Health Department, our First Selectmen, and many community organizations also worked all weekend to provide support. We will work together to keep the focus on mental health and physical health and the physical health needs of our students and community. Our staff and teachers are hurting also, and we must make sure we check in on each other and provide the support, love, and even oxygen to allow us to breathe and continue to do the important work that the district has been doing and what we need to build on for the future. I want to also thank Dr. Adley for his 24-by-7 support, phone calls, and communication over the weekend, the cabinet that's here, many folks that I saw over the weekend at the high school. I also want to thank pastors Brandy, Gary, and Greg at the Nuroton Presbyterian Church for the vigil Saturday night and the meeting last night with Jim Cosco, who spoke so beautifully about the loss of his son Kevin. I think his words were powerful and full of meaning and something we should say each day: "It is okay to not be okay." And I had the whole audience do this, need to turn to each other and say, "I love you, man." Lastly, always remember to tell the ones you love, "I love you," and that I will care for you always. So, thank you. I will turn it over to you, Doc. I will open it up for public comment. I'm sorry. I will amend the agenda. Thank you. We'd like a motion to amend the agenda to add item 8F to the end of the agenda. The item is a crisis response support. Do you have a motion? Mrs. Bass, second by Mr. Maroni. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. So, we'll move now to public comment. What we would like to do, Michelle, before we start public comment, we have our First Selectman here, Monica McNally, and she'd like to say a few words. Thank you, Monica.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, administrators. Good evening, board, parents, guests. I'm here to say tonight, I echo everything that Duke said. We are, as a town, torn apart by this, but we will come together. We will get through it. My simple message tonight is to really say thank you to all of you. You work incredibly hard on the behalf of all of our students, and it is greatly appreciated by the town. We will continue to move forward. We have several things that I'm sure Dr. Adley will go through that we will be working on together, but really, my message tonight is to thank all of you for all of the time and the care that you put forward into our most precious assets in this town, and that's our children. So, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. I'll just add to that. I think it's easy, and I never want to overlook anyone, but the support that I've gotten as an individual, and I think the support that collectively the board has done as a group is tremendous, so I want to thank the board, too. I apologize for not having it in my remarks as your head is swirling around everything, but I thank you to our student representatives, too, for all the support you provided. But the board has been an incredible support for myself, for Jill as the vice chair, and Dr. Adley as we've worked through all of this. So, thank you. Michelle?
Good evening. For participants in person, please wait for the chairperson to acknowledge and call each participant to the microphone. For participants via Zoom, please click the raise hand option. For all participants, please state your name and address for the record log. Each speaker will have the three minutes to comment. We'll start with in-person.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Miller Ward. I'm in 10th grade, and I live at 67 Deepwood Road. To say that I and the majority of our student body are struggling is an understatement. Each death has had a compounding effect on my mental health for different reasons. Last night, I listened to the Zoom call for the high school parents, and what made sense to me was that teachers need training enough to know that saying things like "you have a lot to live for" is actually going to affect anyone struggling negatively. They call this toxic positivity. That when everything goes back to normal, students can often feel like they are alone in their struggles, which only leads to more problems. We all need to learn the language to talk about mental health in a healthy way, like addressing topics directly, rather than calling it "the situation," we need to call it "the deaths." And thank you, Mr. Dineen, for doing that tonight. In fact, what I experienced in school as advice and the advice given by the licensed therapist last night on the Zoom were contradictory. Myself, along with most of the students, whether we know it or not, are not learning during this time of crisis. That is what trauma does to our brains. We are in varying stages of grief, flight, fight, or freeze mode. Processing what has happened takes a pause and time to figure out what we are feeling and how to help each other. Teachers, students, and parents are all suffering. We need a long-term solution integrated into our daily life, not a tidal wave of crisis mitigation and not another seminar or big group talk. We need more resources and outlets, ones that are the fabric of our culture, not add-ons. We, as a community, need to come together and learn from each other how to talk to us kids and have the difficult conversations, not just for the high schoolers, but for the middle schoolers and the elementary schoolers, too, as they are all part of our community. Matthew and Hayden deserved more than what the school is providing for us for mental health, and everyone who knew Matthew, Henry, and Hayden need the resources we weren't able to provide for those boys now more than ever. And since what we have been doing to date didn't work for them, it's not going to work for future students. I encourage you to rethink how you are approaching mental health with our community so we can avoid times of crisis like this. Thank you for your time.
Roland Plow, Ford Duffey's Lane.
Mental health conditions like depression are diseases of disconnection, which makes them community diseases. When a community loses a member to suicide, the community often comes together in connecting grievance and healing. When it involves a child, we are often unified by common fear in that it could have been ours. In that moment, some disagreements get put aside and fences get mended. Comfort happens as that fear is released and shared. Instinctively, we look for answers to quiet our anxieties. Some choose to do so in isolation rather than by taking risks that might reveal our insecurities to others. What we don't realize is that many share those same insecurities. Tragically, this is an echo of the same path taken by our young people who have chosen a final isolating act to resolve a crisis of disconnection. Communities that are well-connected build immunity to mental health conditions. When they solve problems and set policy by first identifying shared interests, they can more easily have comfortable conversations about uncomfortable issues rather than settling for uncomfortable conversations or avoiding conversation at all. The youth mental health crisis that our town is facing is unequivocally a shared challenge. Communities that are well-connected resist the instinct to try to solve community problems in silos of interest because they understand that their organizations intersect in more ways than they are autonomous. Even our school community is not an island in and of itself. No organization acting in solitude is going to be able to resolve this crisis without acting in concert with the entire Darien community. Darien is facing a community crisis that has been brewing for some time. Our ability to protect our children, heal, and grow depends on our ability to respond to this crisis in a unified manner. There might be apparent conflicts of interest. We must put those aside, just as concerned parents are likely relaxing some of the boundaries that they ordinarily set when they engage their children. Residents and organizations should have faith that they can put their perspectives and ideas on the table without reproach, and in exchange, make space for others, too, as well. Making space isn't agreeing with; it's acknowledging that somebody cares and came forward. Emotion is infectious. The tone we set among ourselves as adults is absorbed by our children. If they see us take risks in communicating our needs through healthy connection, they'll be more inclined to voice their needs without fear. If they see us attach contempt to their behavior when they are compensating for emotional pain, they won't pry out for help in ways that make us uncomfortable or in any way at all. On a personal level, I have a few asks for our school community. Become a trauma-informed school. Adopt restorative practices as best practices, particularly with behavioral issues where there's a clear link between behavior and emotional trauma. Address any instances where risk management concerns conflict with student well-being. We know you're risk managers, but we need to look beyond that and see the child. From the very top down and all across the school community, remove any stigma or discomfort attached to addressing mental health. Make this our culture and mindset. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening, Roland. Anyone else from the audience?
Joanna Walsh, 17 Pleasant Street. And I'm just speaking as a parent tonight. When I was 19, I got a tattoo. Nowadays, everyone has a tattoo, but 26 years ago, it was less common. I got a tattoo because I was worried that I would kill myself. At that time, it was thought that Jews could not be buried in a Jewish cemetery if they had a tattoo. So, my mental state was such that I could see myself taking my own life, but I could not see myself leaving my parents with the final indignity of burying me in a secular cemetery. I tell you this story today because I found myself an escape hatch. As mentioned in the excellent Zoom last night, sponsored by DPS, our kids are in crisis for many reasons, but one is the unrelenting need to achieve: be number one in sports, be number one in academics, be number one in music, be number one in the theater. Imperfection is for other towns. Our students develop a cognitive rigidity where if they don't excel the way they think they are supposed to, there must be something wrong with them. Our children need an off-ramp. They need an escape hatch. The compounding problem is that none of us are trained to help them, and they know that. Parents, board members, teachers, administrators, none of us know how to help a child in crisis, and our kids know that. We need immediate professional development for our teachers and coaches and administration. We need foundational programs to normalize asking for help. We need programs that will make us realize that our own town culture is rotting us from the inside out. I am asking the administration to start looking for these programs and to make them many, not just one, and to find programs that start with ALP, not just DHS. I am asking the Board of Education to actually support your superintendent when he tells you what he needs. Help our children find their way to safer ground. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Anyone else in the audience? Michelle, we'll move over to Zoom.
Ms. Teresa Vogt, you are unmuted, and recognize your video should start momentarily.
Hi, Teresa Vogt, 22 Circle Road. In 2019, we sat in this room and listened as parents of students as young as five years old told us of the anxiety and other mental health issues facing our youngest learners. It was that meeting where interim superintendent Dr. Landon spoke to the need for each elementary school to have two psychologists in the building. You was a board debated the need, and you also debated the FTE addition to the budget put forth by an interim superintendent. Thankfully, you guys agreed to have it. I remember sitting in that meeting with tears in my eyes, listening to one mother speak about her kindergartner and his experience. Make no mistake, Darien had a mental health crisis long before the pandemic. I have heard people blame the schools, the administrators. People are looking for an answer. It's natural. We're human. We want answers to what's going on with our kids, but there are no easy answers, and there is no one answer when it comes to mental health. My now-20-year-old daughter had leukemia when she was a preschooler. Since then, both my kids have learned to live with addressing their mental health. When I tell people that treating my daughter's leukemia was easier than treating her mental health, they scoff. When I tell people that I would take her cancer diagnosis any day of the week over the mental health issues my kids have faced over time, they can't believe me. But her oncologist even agreed with me because a cancer diagnosis has a scientifically proven protocol that fights that cancer. Mental health isn't that easy. Not all medicines work. Talk therapy is usually ongoing. There's no proven protocol. There's no light at the end of the tunnel sometimes with how long it takes to treat mental health. That said, there are things we need to look at as a community. Every day, our kids are faced with the pressure to be the best. We celebrate being the number-one high school in the state. We celebrate our championship teams. When was the last time we talked about the teams that may not have made the playoffs, but they worked hard and they did their best? I have heard board members and community members demand as many AP classes be offered as possible. We demand an archaic grading system that doesn't reward progress in mastering a lesson over time. We worry that kids are falling behind because of the pandemic, but what is it that they're falling behind in? There's no roadmap to success that says that if you can't read a chapter book by the age of eight, you will fail in life. There's no roadmap that says you need to take five AP classes in one year in order to achieve happiness in life. And yet, in this room, week after week, that is exactly what many people are looking for. How do we measure success? Is it being the number-one high school in the state with some of the best sports teams to boot? Or is it giving our kids the chance to fail, the chance to know that being number one isn't always the goal, the chance to know that they can seek help and not be judged by their peers or the community for needing that help? Thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
There are no more raised hands at this time. Oh, one just popped up. Cynthia Adams, you are unmuted and recognized. Your video should start momentarily.
Hi, Cynthia, can you hear us?
You're still muted.
We can't hear you. You need to unmute, Cynthia. Can you hear us? We can't hear you. Michelle, anything you can do on your end?
Not on our end. I will check with Jeff.
Okay. Cynthia, we'll have public comment at the end if you stay with us. All right, thank you. All right, thank you all for speaking. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you for those of you who have spoken this evening. You'll forgive me, and you'll understand if I make some similar sentiments, and I confine my announcements, just literally, to two announcements this evening. I'll let our young people carry the rest of the announcements. Yes, it's with a heartbreak and sadness that our Darien High School community learned over the weekend about the untimely death of Hayden Thorson, a beloved sophomore student at the high school. Hayden was an outgoing student athlete. He enjoyed his friends and hockey. He was a joyful, kind young man. Just as his presence filled the hockey goal, his positive energy and big heart always filled the room. This is the third student death that the school has grieved in the past few months. The pain of losing these beautiful young lives is unbearable. It is both devastating and frightening for our families, the school community, our staff, and the town. Our school community is understandably hurting from these tragic losses of life. As we support our student body, we also remember and honor the lives of Matthew, Henry, and Hayden, and we will continue to extend our heartfelt condolences to the parents and the families of the three boys. There is no easy transition to the next announcement, so you'll forgive me. But as you probably have heard today, as reported in the media, there were 14 students, elementary students, and one student who were killed in Uvalde, Texas. Just unimaginable. And actually, if you don't mind, I would ask for just a pause, a moment of reflection Thank you. It is completely understandable that the news we've just received will increase everyone's anxiety. I just want to apprise the community. I sent out a message just before the board meeting. There will be an increased security at all of the schools tomorrow from the police department for the arrivals during the day and for early dismissals. I want to thank Chief Anderson for his continual support. Anytime we need the police department, they're there at our back and call, and I appreciate their support. Please know that security plans, supervision, is being reviewed by all administrators, and the schools will be ready tomorrow to ensure the mental health and the safety of our students during the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Move on to the student representative reports. Olivia and John?
So, I have a strange job because a lot of my announcements are positive. So...
Well, that's a good thing, John. That's good. Thank you.
I hope it'll lighten the mood a little bit. First of all, the theater department is putting on a production, Student Pros, this Friday and Saturday at 7:00 p.m. Tickets will be sold online. We have been nominated in 23 categories for the Halo Awards, the Theater Award Show, which will be held next Tuesday at Seven Angels Theater in, I believe, Waterbury or Danbury. I'm going to speak about Names Day, which was held last week for our freshman class. It was an extraordinary day put on by the Anti-Defamation League, the ADL, which was centered around building a strong community, building a community that is accepting, building a community that is a safe space for everyone. It was particularly beneficial because it had both smaller group settings where students broke up into groups of about 20 and had smaller discussions about what we can all do to create a safe community, as well as a larger, several-hours-long assembly, actually, which was... It went by quickly. You would not have known. You wouldn't have been in there for two and a half hours because it was broken up beautifully. There was an open mic opportunity for members of the freshman class to speak out about their experiences of bullying, and there was also a panel of members of the DHS classes who were not necessarily freshmen who also spoke, which was very useful, and I believe is something that we are looking into continuing at DHS going forward because it was very successful. The TRIAM Music National Honor Society held a senior recital that is currently undergoing. Actually, it began an hour ago now. They have just elected a new leadership team, and I would like to congratulate President Conan Thibodeau. Lastly, before I give it over to Liv, Memorial Day prep is well underway, and we would like to commend the members of the band, tutor singers, cheerleaders, the volunteer fire department, Post 53, and everyone else who was working to make that parade as amazing as it has always been. So, we thank them for that.
Once again, I'm going to be talking about some of the stuff going on for the seniors since my area of expertise. AP testing just wrapped up. Results will probably come out in July, and as a result, we are now all on internship, which is a super-great learning experience for all of us. We also have our awards ceremony and our senior scholarship ceremony on Thursday, so any students who won academic awards or receiving school-sponsored scholarships will be honored on Thursday. The FCX sports season just started, and some of the results have already come out. I think the girls' tennis team just won FCX. And in addition, more celebrations of students' achievements. Our high school art show was last Monday, which I know was a great opportunity for everyone in our school's art classes to share what they have been working on all year.
Thank you. Thank you both, and thank you for your leadership. It's not easy, and thank you for all that you do up at the high school.
Olivia, where's your internship?
I'm working at Stacy TDA's law firm.
But to approval of the minutes, I may have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 10, 2022. Motion by Mr. Maroni, second by Mrs. Bass. All those in favor? That is unanimous. One of the board committee reports. Mr. Seem?
The finance committee met last Thursday, and there's a transfer that I believe we're bringing forth for recommendation that Rachel will talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Seem. Mrs. Ox.
The policy committee postponed their meeting from last Friday, and we'll be meeting this Friday to go through the next series of our audit.
Thank you, Mrs. Ox. Mr. Maroni?
The facilities committee met May 12. We discussed a proposed athletic foundation, athletic press box, RFP for the architectural libraries we design, and an outdoor classroom proposal. Meno Six had a couple of updates on some projects.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni. Anything on Hanley Homes at Royal?
I'm pleased to say that the request for appropriations given to the... Asked of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance were both approved for a total of $77.5 million. Where Hanley's appropriation is for 26, Holmes's is for 24, and Royals is for 27.5. These will go to the RTM for a final vote on June 6. We are eagerly looking forward to that. Right now, the... Several members of the committee are at F&amp;B, and education will meet on June 1st and speak to them before that meeting on the 6th. We have chosen an architectural firm, the firm of KG&amp;D, after an extensive process of interviews, recommendations, tours of schools, and architectural shirts produced by several finalists. And right now, tomorrow night, we will be interviewing construction managers who... We're interviewing three tomorrow night, and we'll be selecting a firm next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Ox Ridge continues to be...
Hold on. Sorry.
Go ahead. Mrs. Perrin, sorry.
Hi, sorry. The curriculum committee will be meeting this Thursday morning at 8:30.
Hi, sorry. The curriculum committee will be meeting this Thursday morning at 8:30, all discussing the math curriculum, both K5 and K12. Or sorry, 612.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. There was an Oxbridge Building Committee meeting last week, a regular Thursday meeting. We continue to be on our timeline there in terms of where I think at 90% complete. We're still under budget. We're working through some logistics around moving, but Mike Lynch and Kevin and the team have done a, a great job there. So school will be dismissed, the teachers will be packing up their classrooms, those moves will be made. The teachers will spend some time, as we get back to school, setting up their classrooms and demolition of the old Oxford School will start, I guess, towards the end of June. So we're, we're on our way there. Anyone that hasn't stopped by there, it's exciting. It surrounds, the blue wave color is around the entrance of Henley, and a lot of landscaping works being done over the next couple of weeks. We'll move on to Darien School update. Dr. Adley.
Yes, I don't know if Alicia's on, but it's just not. I'll just make a few comments. Alicia, are you there?
She was on. I want to hear her.
There she is.
Alicia, can you hear me okay? Would you like to give the update or would you like me to do it? I think she's standing there. I think we've got. Well, I will, I will be very, very brief. We dropped a little bit, but it doesn't really, in some ways, it doesn't seem like that. It's sort of a steady sort of flow, so to speak. I'll just update that we had a couple of events that you may have noticed or not were deferred, and they weren't necessarily deferred because we were doing any precaution of COVID, but in one case, it was for a group of seniors who couldn't participate because they had COVID, so we wanted to make sure then their last event that, that, that they were included. So we deferred it for that reason. And then we all had another staff-related matter. So we really haven't canceled anything for COVID. If we had to, we would, but, but they were moved for other reasons. So we are staying steady down this, down the stretch. The, the normal activities are in place and I'm more, I'm more worried, worried or looking, anticipating what's going to happen over the summer here, and hopefully we'll get some direction, but hopefully things are, things will improve and we'll be in a good shape.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Any questions around that update? We'll move on to an update on the district technology plan. Dr. Tranberg, Dr. McGeadigan, and Mr. Adams.
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight, this is almost a year ago to the day that we enrolled the new future-ready technology plan. And if we think about where we were a year ago with technology, we were a, a complete mix of appreciation and resentment. And so I think we can look at it with a clearer lens this year because we have a, a bit of a healthier look at, at the role that technology should be playing in, in our education. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McGeadigan. This will really focus on the future-ready technology plan with a couple of other updates related to technology, both instructional and IT.
Thank you, Dr. Tranberg. We are pleased to share with you this update to our future technology plan. So tonight, we're going to briefly review the events that brought us to the creation of our future-ready tech plan, how we define this plan, how the seven framework drivers guide our strategic actions, the work of the district tech council, our shift to BYOD at the high school, and a status report on our robotics program. So if you recall, from 2018 to 2019, a technology committee that consisted of students, parents, teachers, administrators, worked together and created a shared vision and core values. Those two areas were then incorporated into our future-ready tech plan. The information that we gathered filled a quite lengthy tech plan. This forward-thinking plan was the first to align with our district's strategic plan. We then had a cross-functional team of teachers and administrators volunteer to serve as the district technology council to carry out this ambitious plan over the next three years. So this is a familiar graphic to anybody who's read our future-ready plan. It's built around this idea of collaborative leadership, which is through a constant design loop of the vision, plan, implementation, assessment, and refinement where needed. The plan is underpinned by the theory of action, which is if we create innovative, transformative, and sustainable learning environments to provide technology-rich learning experiences, then all students will develop future-ready technology skills to enhance and support their learning in school and beyond. The plan is operationalized through those seven drivers, those blobs of color that you see there, which all focus on student learning, which of course, our vision statement is preparing all students today to thrive in a changing world tomorrow. We are really proud to tell you that the state of Connecticut is going to be adapting this framework and that the Darien School District Plan has been offered as the exemplar to the first cohort of districts that are going to be working through this for the next few months. We have provided specific status updates for each of these drivers with our memo to the board in this update. So you all received this page with all the different blobs of color for the different drivers, and they give some more specific updates. And we're of course happy to answer any questions regarding those updates. Right now, I'm just going to highlight the most significant work of each of those seven drivers. So in curriculum instruction and assessment, the librarians have been working very hard and created a scope and sequence from kindergarten through 12th grade, incorporating not just the American Association of School Library Standards, but the International Society of Technology Standards as well. So that's a really robust scope and sequence. The next steps for them will be to flesh out the curriculum and put that into EDU Plan at 21. Next, we have professional learning. So in our district tech council, one of the subcommittees is professional learning. One of the highlights for them this year was they created benchmarks to support teacher growth with future-ready skills. So they built those benchmarks foundational, intermediate, and expert levels, so that our teachers have an idea of where to drive their growth and then how to find ways to achieve that growth. Next steps for that is the PDEC committee will be reviewing that work. Budget and resources. So we've established replacement cycles for budgetary predictability and planning, which is really key, and not just for big items, but for small items as well. So one example of this is headsets, which we now recognize after going through the pandemic, it's a necessary item. So now we know exactly what grade level at each elementary school will be replaced that year. So having predictability on even small purchases makes a big difference for us shaping the budget. Okay. Okay, community partnerships is really about communication. So we've done newsletters, Parent Tech 101 newsletters, library newsletters. But I think the best thing that we did this year was, we've had four sessions. We have a fifth one coming up on parenting in the digital age. And recently, we had a session that was at Oxbridge, and what was great is we partnered with the Okay2 Delay Group. So we had a student panel on there of middle schoolers who spoke to, maybe they got their phone in seventh grade, maybe not till ninth grade, what that experience was like. We are going to have a similar session at Tokenique on June 2nd. It's really targeted for fourth and fifth grade parents, and we're also inviting those students. And we will have a student panel as well, so that kids are hearing directly from kids on devices, social media, all of that great stuff. If anyone is interested in attending, please contact Kate Watts. She's the parent at Tokenique organizing that. Data and privacy. So we have a process in place where if teachers are interested in requiring new software, they fill out this form, which will walk them through the steps of checking data privacy compliance. They'll talk about the purpose. We'll look and see if we already have a piece of software that's currently in the district that maybe they're not aware of, that already serves that purpose. So that was a pretty good highlight for that area. Sorry. Robust infrastructure. And again, maintaining a standard replacement cycle has been very helpful for us. We've really looked at best practices. How long do devices like Viewsonics last? How long do Chromebooks last? So the best practices in all of those different areas that are part of our infrastructure. Space and time. So our revitalized technology council has been working very hard, particularly the hardware and software subcommittee, in exploring tools, learning environments, and systems to enhance our vision and mission. Remembering that space and time, space in particular, does not always have to be physical. It could be virtual as well. So we've been looking at what are ways that we can optimize the teaching and learning environment at our schools. This will just give you an idea of all of the work that the four subcommittees have been doing during the year. So that's professional learning, the software and hardware, communication, and the equity policies and procedures. And now we'd like to give a very quick update on the nine to 12 transition to BYOD. So so far, we have collected the majority of the senior iPads. We have communication and a plan that will be released fairly soon by the high school that will outline what the collection will be like for ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. Everything else that you might ask about this transition, all of that information will be right there. For those parents who are interested in knowing what the requirements might be, we have it there for Chromebooks, PCs, and Apple devices. And then we tried to think what would make life as easy as possible if you were interested in purchasing a new device. And we've actually have two portals that are connected to this hub. One is for Chromebooks and Microsoft Surface, and the other is for MacBook Pro and MacBook Air. These are not things that we're saying you should go out and buy, but should you want a recommended model, it's there just for convenience. No? Okay. So those iPads will be reprovisioned in a number of ways, including for testing, for classroom use, for specific iPad, like notability, or for filming, for ELP, robotics, and all sorts of other things going on in our district. And speaking of robotics, this year, we are proud to say that we have robotics clubs at every single Gosh darn school. So we have K through 2 and a 3 through 5 club at each of the five elementary. We have two teams at Middlesex. And we recently have our new high school robotics team that will be having a competition of sorts against New Canaan in a couple of weeks. And we also just recently had on the 17th, a intramural tournament that was all the teams from grades three through eight, and it was a tremendous amount of fun. As Dr. Tranberg said, it was so nice to see so many smiles and laughter and all these kids just having fun. It was really great to see. This program has reached about 150 kids just in its first year. So we look forward to expanding the program and reaching even more. So we're happy to answer any questions or discussions. I just want to point out first, there is a link right here in the slide deck. So tinyurl.com/dps techplan22 will link to the updated future-ready tech plan. So Jeff and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. McGeadigan. A little bit of the board questions. Mrs. Warren.
Thank you, Dr. McGeadigan. I'm just happy to see digital citizenship mentioned in there, and I was curious what that was going to look like. Would you be discussing legal issues with children as well? Because I feel like that is one thing where we see some issues, and part of it is just that they're not clear on what is and isn't allowed. And even as parents, I think some of us have dropped the ball a little bit. Older kids, when we first give devices, we tend to have a more thoughtful approach, and as we get to the younger students, it's less thoughtful. So.
Sorry, I leaned on the remote, so it just advanced about 20 slides. Sorry. So digital citizenship has multiple parts, and it's taught explicitly, obviously, through the library, but our interest is making sure that it's integrated, just like the ISTI standards eventually throughout the curriculum. So within that realm, ethics is a big part. What are things that are allowed in terms of use of music, use of images, use of text? How do you properly cite things? The librarians actually spend a good deal of time teaching students how to, and they're both nodding, how to properly cite sources. So that is a, a good deal of what we do. We of course cover all sorts of other things from how not to give any information of your parents, because actually, it's one of the, the top ways for identity theft is accessing information through somebody's children. Usually, they just don't know. But it's covered in my parenting in a digital age session, so come on over. So that's ethics, covering cybersecurity, covering how to actually have conversations with people properly, all that digital etiquette. So these are all pieces of that entire puzzle. So it covers a lot of ground.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ockman.
Just a question about teacher readiness, given that next year will be really a year that we could see a plethora of different devices inside a classroom, and I know we have some of that now, but do we feel like teachers are ready if a lesson is going, or they know the procedure is in place if a student says, this doesn't work? I, I can't get the material. Like, do, do we have that piece of this worked out now that we're going to multiple devices in a classroom?
I think this is going to be a continuous piece of professional learning. There certainly is a, a shift in environment when you're dealing with multiple different devices. But as we've been a Google app school for a really long time, we've had that commonality that has really worked across different devices. And as we know from our, our survey results that we shared in our BYOD presentation, most of our students have been bringing their own devices to the high school. So we feel that it's not going to be as big a hurdle as, as one might think.
Can I, I'll just add to that, the 87, I think it was 87% of students were bringing their own devices. It was something so high. And the other way that we're accommodating that is the teacher devices will also And the other way that we're accommodating that is the teacher devices will also be max, which is what most of the students are bringing on top of it. So I think the combination of that, too, will contribute to that readiness. And there will be PD for them as they get, as the teachers get their new devices. So it's not only helping students troubleshoot, but it's the way that they would troubleshoot themselves.
Great. Thank you.
Mrs. McCann.
What is the timing on the scope and sequence actual rollout? So I understood the steps to be, now we have the scope and sequence, then curriculum, then we have to roll that out. What are we, when are we looking at students actually receiving that material in a meaningful way?
From the library media specialist, they already have kindergarten and first grade completed. So this summer, as painful as that may be, we're going to be working on grades two through five, which we hope to have completed. And then during the next academic year, we'll be working on middle school and high school in making sure that we have the right kind of transition from division to division.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mrs. McCann.
And then we know that planning is as important a part of teaching as actually being in the classroom. You have in here under professional learning, the collaborative time. How is that being done? Is that through PLCs? Is that time that's reserved separately? How's that being organized and administered?
Do you mean just at the high school or?
Well, I know the PLCs are at the high school, so that's part of my, the genesis of my question. How are our teachers receiving that collaborative time for planning and learning how to use technology, how to effectively integrate technology into their lessons?
You never have enough professional learning, and you never have enough collaborative time. So finding that is always a struggle, ensuring PLCs certainly, during grade level meetings for younger divisions. We try to also push out little bits in our tech tips. That's an idea, oh, hey, in your grade level group or in your department meeting, this is something that you may want to explore. This is an example of a lesson that was recently done, 10th grade at such and such school. It was very successful. These are the steps that we did. Here's the sample rubric that they used. So trying to find ways to make that collaborative time as efficient and as powerful as possible is something else that we need to continually work on.
Thank you.
Can I add on to that one, too? The, so the, the professional learning subcommittee of the tech council, Dr. McGeaden mentioned benchmarks for the teachers. So those would be, what are the guarantees that we want to make sure all teachers have easy facility and access to those technologies? We also have, by we, I mean, Dr. McGeaden has created a pretty robust professional development area of the TechWave website, where if teachers want to go beyond what we're considering the benchmarks, there are opportunities to do that, because time is limited, as you know.
Thank you.
Mrs. Best.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. I noticed in community partnerships, there were a couple pieces that our status is delayed. And I was curious what is causing the delays on the social media use website and branding component.
I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Tranberg, actually. So, Dr. Tranberg, that's a reference to the increase of social media use and website to support communication and promote district branding across platforms to create uniform message.
So the most direct answer is we didn't get to it this year. The other part to it is the branding part wasn't aligning with what we were doing for the rest of the branding in the district. So we, we couldn't brand like the social media piece without having, let's say, I think, a new logo was part of that. And if we don't have the new logo, we really couldn't do the branding of just one, one slice. It was an ambitious 2022 in the original plan, so.
Mrs. Parent.
Thank you. And this is a little bit of a self-serving question as the parent of a rising freshman, but has there been any consideration to any, you know, purchasing power, you know, when you roll out what, what is required for these devices? Is there any way to get a discount for any parents?
Actually, at the Apple portal, that will be linked to that BYOD transition hub, there is a discount built in there. It's a painful price anyway, despite the, despite the discount. But there will certainly be other opportunities as well. So on the CDW site, those are discounted. Yeah. So, and those are really attractive price points. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's from $275. So starting at $275, for really well-equipped Chromebooks and two different models, up through Microsoft Slate and Mac Air and up to a MacBook Pro. So depending on where you might be, if you're a parent of a freshman, you might be opting to go with something a little bit lower. If I was purchasing something for my senior, I would be looking toward what would best fit for that senior year and beyond.
Thank you.
Dr. McGeadigan, do we need to, with respect to just that conversation now, is there any additional communication we need to do to make sure people know to go to that portal, that there are discounts within that portal? Just, I would make sure we over-communicate what the availability is.
Absolutely. The high school team has been working very hard on that, and they have a fairly robust set of communication that will go out. And the hub itself is, we tried to make it as simple as possible, yet comprehensive in its information.
Do you have, I worry, and having done it sometimes from a business standpoint, are we prepared in the new school year and have some type of crisis room or war room with the right staffing to deal with technology issues, phone calls, setup, passwords, R issued devices versus student-issued devices? You may not have that answer now, but I'd like to hear about that before the school year starts, that we are prepared. If you need resources, let us know what resources you need. But it's kind of roundabout a saying is, we want this smooth as possible. So whatever the resources you need are, because it's a change, but let's have the right people behind the scenes to help the students and help the teachers. Provisioning laptops has been an issue, so just also encourage that that communication goes out early and often, because I know our office is really struggling to buy the most simple of devices these days. Jeff, any insight on that in terms of procurement of devices?
Actually, we, we have, we've looked into every piece that needs to come in for next year, and we're looking at most four-week lead time. So we are knocking wood in good shape.
We should, I mean, that kind of should be a headline in communication to parents. Understand the lead time in terms of what you need, should you go down the path of purchasing something for your students. Thank you, Jeff. Mrs. Akman.
So just a comment that I think got a little buried in all our questions. Congratulations on the state picking up your model as a Templar.
Our model.
Our model. Sorry, I didn't do much work on it. But I do think we had some, some really robust conversations as the tech plan was coming out, and it looks like the work you've done, you know, even before, before we can give it accolades, has received accolades. So thank you, that's a lot of work. And I think the district should be very proud that if we're being picked up to be used as an example around the state, it's because of the work that our staff put into it and took our input and really made it something. So thank you for that.
Thank you on behalf of all those people in the tech council and IT that have helped tremendously. Yeah, it takes a village.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Mr. Brown? Okay, sorry. Dr. McGeaden, the one thing that I think we've talked about as you come and give updates and something to think about, I don't know whether it's the summer or early in the school year, and it might be even best served through Mrs. Parent and the curriculum committee. I think what I've heard from the board and from other folks is, I'd like somehow for you to present to us and see the connection of, here's the curriculum, here's the device, how does it work? What's the teacher's role? What's the student's role? It could be in the classroom, it could be when they leave the classroom and go do additional work or studying or homework. But to me, I'm always like, the missing link to me is the curriculum tied to the device. I know that involves a lot of professional development from a teacher's standpoint, but I'd like to just kind of hear about and see that connection, even if some teachers want to come and talk through it with us or some students. I think that would be helpful. It's a huge.
We'd love to do a showcase.
Yeah, it's a huge investment. It's a worthwhile investment. It's proved incredibly effective as we've gone through COVID. But I'd like to see more of a hands-on, you know, in terms of how it all connects. And not to put Olivia and John on the spot, but since we've got experts here, could you give a little insight as to your, your feelings and how things have worked for you as you've gone through the high school from a technology standpoint? And are you a school device person? Are you a bring-your-own-device person? And just at a high level, we would appreciate it.
I've personally been a bring-your-own-device person. And most classes, especially post-pandemic, do most of their work through Google Classroom, which in class and online, like, teachers can post all their announcements there, updates with tests. If they're going to be absent, they can post subplans ahead of time, which is really great. It's kind of given like a really fast communication between students and their teachers, both at home and in the classroom. The only kind of snag people have had with having both bring-your-own-device and the iPad is some teachers will want to do something that can only be done on the iPad. And so kids who bring their own device will then also bring an iPad. And then it gets kind of confusing and heavy on the backpack. But mostly, aside, beside from math, math is really the only one that doesn't use devices because it's such a pen and paper subject. But even then, kids have the option to receive worksheets online. But for the most part, I think it's just been really helpful in providing a immediate communication between teachers and students inside and outside of the classroom.
It sounds like a key component of the communication factor. Thank you very much.
I want to add that, especially with the whole compatibility thing, because we use Google, it's, it's been very easy to integrate that across all these different devices. I know my freshman year, I used the school iPad, and I promptly switched to a computer just because, you know, it didn't, it didn't work for what I had wanted to do with it. And so I felt no kind of struggle, because, you know, most of my classmates, you know, live included apparently, uses an Apple computer, and I don't. And I have felt absolutely no sort of barrier against using something that isn't the MacBook or MacBook Pro, which I think has been really excellent on the part of the district.
Great. Thank you for letting me put you on the spot. Mr. Brown.
Thanks, Duke. Chris wants to ask a question. I don't expect you to know it now, because I posed this to Dr. DeSova way back when. In terms of the Google Classroom, who owns all that data that we put into it? And if, don't expect an answer now, but would love to hear an answer at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. McCann.
Can I just add to your request that when we talk about technology, that we add assistive technology to that discussion? We can go down a rabbit hole with assistive technology, so, you know, understanding that it wouldn't have to be soup to nuts, but I think it is helpful to understand some, some key touchpoints, please.
I could just, I could add to that also, if this is working. We'd be glad to work with you, Joan, on that. And also, in the showcase, we could show some of the different apps we use with AT devices also. We can context it into a English lesson, showing we use Grammarly or different apps, so that might be helpful. So families are familiar with that also.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Thank you, Dr. McGeaden, Dr. Tranberg. Thank you, Jeff. Yes, sir, go ahead, John.
I thought of something. I, I do know that a lot of those device options that you had mentioned are things that don't necessarily have, like, integrated kind of pencil things, especially the MacBooks, which I know a lot of people at DSHS have. I think it might be worth kind of promoting some sort of device that has like an iPad component to it, or like a pencil, just because I know that a lot of the kind of note-taking models don't work as well, and that they have been proven to not work as well when you type them as opposed to when you write them out by hand. So maybe that's, I don't know, something that we could possibly promote from parents who are going to buy a device for their kids.
Good, good point.
An excellent idea. We have the two options, the Microsoft Surface and the Chromebook, and one of the two Chromebooks you can write on. Yep. And maybe someday, Apple will change their mind.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to a first reading and discussion of the 2023-2024 Darian School Calendar. Dr. Adley.
Yes, this is, this is the first reading. It reflects some of the elementary conferences on it. There are only a few schools, other school districts that are out there at the moment with their calendars. And so the February break is just, that's, that's the one that seems to be the most popular at the, at the moment. It may be, the most sensible at the moment, but there may be a discussion around that. Graduation, you don't need to, you can set graduation now, but you don't want to be bringing the children back again, right? So we can't do that. So I have noted here that we'll wait till April just to, so let us solidify that and go from there. But just a reminder that should you want to, you can set graduation, but you still have to go to school 180 days, so it doesn't really make sense to do that now, I don't think. But with that, I'll leave it at that for the moment.
Any questions or thoughts on the 2023-2024 school calendar?
Yes. One of the questions received, the email was, does professional development always have to be on a Friday morning? And just, is there a preference?
So I think it was a PLC question, if I'm correct. I'd have to check in at the high school. I think it's more to do with the, the rotation of the blacks. But I can check in on the history of it and whether, there's many places that do it on different days. If that day on the 16th, there was, I think there was a question about the 16th. I certainly, I don't think Dr. Tranberg would recommend pushing the 16th Professional Development Day further out in the calendar, if we were going to do it. We would bring it into the calendar, and we typically, I think we've typically made it on a Friday, because attendance may or may not be that great on, on a Friday before vacation.
Yeah.
I'm trying to be.
All right. Thank you. We'll bring that back for further discussion and action. We'll move on to discussion on the April 2021-2022 financial report and possible action on proposed budget transfers. Mr. Ruhl.
I'll just wait till the PowerPoint comes up. So this is the financial report through April. We are forecasting a positive balance of $685,333, or about 0.64% of our budget. The general education RCs are forecasting a positive $120,000. The special education RCs are forecasting a positive $563,000, most of which are made up of the increased excess cost. I do want to update that we did receive the final installment of excess cost reimbursement today, and it did match our projection. So that money has been received. And then the COVID RC is a positive $1,700. Again, the COVID and ARP expenses total a little over $1,085,000. We do have a grant for $1,250,000. There have been transfers for $61,000 to date that have been approved, and we are forecasting a small balance of $1,700 in materials. Salaries are forecasted to positive $122,000. This is primarily from the portion of unused budget control at $43,000, some savings in student interns, clubs and councils, and some salary savings. Operating is a slight deficit at $6,281. We do have two transfers to cover those deficits for the board's approval tonight. Those make up the library redesign study for the architectural firm, for the high school, middle school, and Tokenique. Those bids did come in lower than anticipated, and so that is $44,600. The deductible to cover the storm damage from Elsa and Ida for $10,000. And then we have some small positive balances in materials, legal fees, and special education tuition. Fixed is a positive $41,000. Utilities continue to trend positive. We have a small balance in health insurance from some census changes throughout the year, and then some positive balance in our Kirma accounts, workers' compensation, general liability, and student accent. Revenue is forecasted $527,000 to the positive. And again, the bulk of that is really made up of the excess cost reimbursement that did come in at 80.03% against the budget of 67 and a half. ELP tuition remains slightly down at $39,000. So we do have two transfers for consideration. The first is to fund the deductible for the storm damage that we had in the fall. We didn't want to wait until we received all the reimbursements from Kirma, which have been received. We are recommending taking those funds from premium savings from census changes. And then the second transfer for $44,600 would be to fund an architectural study with Silver Petracelli, who's the low bid for the high school, middle school, and Tokenique library redesign. And we are recommending taking those funds from unfilled interns, the salary savings, and premium savings from health insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Ruhl. Any update on the vehicles we're waiting on?
So we have two of them actually in possession, and we should get the third one on Thursday. So we have two of them actually in possession and we should get the third one on Thursday.
And then we're, we're done.
Then we're done.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Seeny.
Rich, I forgot to ask this question at the meeting last Thursday, but similar along the lines of like any supply chain issues that we would have to preorder on or?
Nothing that we have to preorder. We are seeing things that usually take two weeks to get like computers that are now taking four weeks. There are some small items like toner that we mentioned. That's actually nearly impossible to get at this point. That lead time is about three, three months, actually. Paper takes a little bit longer. Now it used to be a turnaround time in a couple of days and that's taken about a week. But nothing that's, with the exception of actually toner, is anything that's more than, you know, a few weeks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? May I have a motion to approve the April 2022 budget transfers as presented? Mrs. McCann, second by Mr. Maroney. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Rood. We will move on to further discussion and possible action on proposed revisions to Board of Education policies. Series 5,000 students, 5100 physical restraint and seclusion of students and use of exclusionary timeout. 5110 school attendance districts, 5125 students in section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and Title II of the Americans with Disability Act of 1990. 5130 student attendance, truancy and chronic absenteeism. 5140 continuity of attendance. 5150 admission of residents, non-resident and exchange students. 5160 dismissal precautions. 5210 student government. 5215 standards of conduct and 5220 student discipline. We'll turn it over to Mrs. Akman and Ms. Sion.
So you have the memo. This is a second read. I see some of our big hitters tonight coming in the room, so I'm happy to entertain questions. But as a second read, I think there was some follow-up, but I think we should be good if the board's ready to approve. It's part of our regular audit. We will eat Friday to take on the next batch of the 5,000 series, the student series, and we will bring those back for review after the committee has a look.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman.
Any board questions?
Anything to add, Mrs. Sion? Good board questions or comments? Mrs. Parent.
I, I just want to, I questioned whether the, the two mental day, mental health days that are in the policy, is that something that we should be advertising in light of recent events? And is that something that people may be, they don't know that they, that is an option for them? Just throwing that out there.
Certainly very pertinent, given the issues that we're dealing with. So I think we need to make it very, very clear and apparent and transparent of they are available for people's use for that purpose. Yes.
Could you, Ms. Sion, could you just give a quick update as to what those days are? There's two days, I believe, or?
Right, two non-consecutive days. But there, I mean, I assume that they would still be put in as sick days, but you may know how they'd be entered in the state.
And these are for students and staff?
Students.
Students.
Students, they're elective days.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. May I have a motion to approve board policy changes as recommended by the board policy committee and as discussed and reviewed at the May 10th Board of Education meeting? Mrs. Best, second by Mrs. Akman. All those in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. We'll move on to action items, personnel items. Ms. Sion, yeah?
That's a complete list of everyone who's resigned and retired at this point.
Okay, Ms. Sion, any color you want to give us on hiring?
So we've gone out early and aggressively. We've already hired some people who will be on the next personal action report. We are going to struggle in some of the shortage areas, but we just keep posting and reposting and using our connections throughout the area.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to just, you know, kind of have that as a quick update. I think, you know, I know just in speaking to you, I sent you over a resume today from someone from another district that reached out to me. So it's a challenge, but I think we'd like to understand it as we go forward. Thank you. Board questions or comments? Yes, sorry, Mrs. Parent.
Mrs. Sion, I'm just curious what use of the areas of, of, you know, particular concern and challenge? What are those particular areas?
Well, special education, speech and language pathologists, technology education, those are at the top of the list right now. Oh, chemistry, although Christian is hunting them down.
Okay.
Just a motion to approve.
Yep. Thanks. May I have a motion to approve the personal items as detailed in the personal action report dated May 24, 2022? Mr. Brown, Mrs. Best, all those in favor? Thank you. I will ask for an amendment to the agenda. You did it. Okay, so we'll go back to that item. So we will now go on to agenda item on a discussion of crisis response. I believe you have Jessica Welch and I see Scott is here also. So I will turn it over to you, Dr. Adley.
Thank you.
Is Jessica here?
She is.
Yes, okay. Jessica, welcome. And to the members of the community, thank you for your understanding over the last couple of days and assistance and outreach. We have Dr. McCarthy with us, Scott. Many of you know Scott. I would also say that Mrs. Dunn, the principal, is with students at a recognition ceremony tonight, where she should be, celebrating students' accomplishments. But I did just want to pause at that point by, and make a comment that a deep appreciation for the principal, the administration, our clinicians, counselors, psychiatrists, our psychologists and other staff members who literally, they'll be somewhat, they don't want, I'm sure they wouldn't want me to say this, but they lived there literally, right? Saturday evening, Saturday morning, planning, Saturday afternoon counseling, Saturday evening planning, same for Sunday. Get up early again for, to meet with the staff Monday morning, go through the same routine the last couple of days. It's just been absolutely, well, it's a phenomenal effort on behalf of our students. And I wouldn't expect anything less from the staff, to be honest with you. But I, I do want to just take a moment and pause it and recognize their, their efforts. Scott, Dr. McCarthy, who also supervises special education at first, the secondary level, this is not here tonight and that capacity is here primarily in his mental health capacity as a psychologist. I want to say Scott is a member of that crisis team. For, you know, for those of you who know Scott, he's somewhat humble, very humble. He has a tremendous disposition as part of the team to inform the team, guide the team, lead the team. And tonight he sits here and I just want to recognize his effort. Scott is going to lead us through, we recognize during a crisis, we recognize that there's a necessity for postvention, immediate responses, and perhaps another level of response. And Jessica will be here to share some of her expertise. And I want to thank Jess for her and her staff who have been on the ground. But Scott's actually going to run through some of the things that have taken place, some of the resources and people involved, where we are right now, where we might be by the end of the week. And kind of what a proposal, let's just sort of take a, an incremental step forward here. I will say we may not have all the answers that the board members may generate. In fact, I'm pretty confident we won't have all the answers. But I think after Scott and Jess speak, I'll give a frame of reference of how you, where we are right now, where we might be and need to be and how we move forward. So with that, Dr. McCarthy, I wanted to, again, thank you for all of your work. You've lived there all, well, the last couple of days and then some. So more than anything, thank you for your guidance, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and thank you for the invitation to speak here tonight. Thank you, Chairman Deneen and to the Board of Education, to the grieving community of Darien. I do have some notes with me and I apologize for reading those. Sort of a heavy topic and I want to make sure that I, I, I mention all the pieces that are necessary to mention and also that I, that I give credit where it's due. So for those of you I have not met, I'm Dr. McCarthy. I'm a special services and special education administrator. I work across the middle school and high school. My, as I said, my, my background is a psychologist previously, and I worked in consultation with the crisis team in that capacity. So as you all know, 55 days ago, the Darien High School community was devastated by the tragic loss of our beloved student. Unfortunately, out of necessity, national organizations of mental health and state agencies have had to develop post-vention guidance for, for school systems, communities, for media organizations and families in the wake of a death. After this horrific event during.
Dr. McCarthy, could you do me a favor? Could you, if that's on, could you pull it closer maybe? I want to make sure it's at least on the microphone, please. Just pull it closer a wee bit, would you, sir?
Yeah. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Psychologists usually rumble. So after this horrific event, Darien High School's crisis team partnered with local agencies, consultants, mental health experts to file, to follow the post-vention guidance and did so with wavering fidelity and compassion. As mental health professionals, we know that a major risk factor in a community for a secondary death by suicide is completion of the first. Vulnerable students observing another student and their pain in a death by suicide has the propensity to engender the same thoughts in another student who is in pain. Saturday, after learning about all of our worst nightmares, the second tragic death by suicide of another beloved student Hayden, our crisis team convened again. Unfortunately, out of necessity, national organizations of mental health and state agencies have had to develop post-vention guidance for school systems, communities, media organizations and families in the wake of the emergence of a death by suicide cluster. Death by suicide cluster post-vention guidance is far more complex and nuanced and requires greater expert and specialized mental health support. Luckily, the state of Connecticut has charged multiple state agencies, including the Connecticut State Department of Education, the Department of Children and Families, the Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, DMS. With this work, DCF and DMS partner and co-chair Connecticut Suicide Advisory Board that monitors the emergency of death by suicide clusters. Scott Nugus, a licensed clinical social worker with the Connecticut State Department of Education, whose role is to support districts in the emergence of a cluster. Saturday, met with our crisis team to provide us consultation. Mr. Nugus immediately, provided consultation immediately as to how to navigate the weekend and the beginning of the week. Mr. Nugus also has convened his counterparts from DCF and DMS, who co-chair the Connecticut State, the Connecticut Suicide Advisory Board to guide our Darien High School administration and crisis team through our intensive cluster post-vention that will take us through the end of the school year and the beginning of the summer. They will help us problem solve both big items like the establishment of larger scales support structures and relatively smaller items like how to navigate finals weeks. We know the line between establishing normalcy, consistency, routine and predictability and respecting the student-specific grieving processes will be challenging. And we will work closely with our community and state partners to guide that problem solving. As community members try to make meaning out of this tragedy, strategy, and understand our current post-vention response, they may wonder why we did not do these things before. I hope to provide some context that may be helpful. In responding to a public mental health crisis, it is important to consider that each action has both an intended consequence and possible unintended consequences. A single action by the administration can have both positive outcomes for some and negative consequences for others. Any given action is also interpreted by the community within their current ability to make meaning of the events and striking the balance of following the guidance while recognizing the need for students to grieve in their own ways is extremely challenging. It is also true that the cumulative effect of a death by suicide cluster requires a different set of actions to be considered that may have had different effects, the worry, of course, being negative, had they been taken in a different context. As you can imagine, this is challenging work. The dedication of the administration at Darien High School, along with the mental health clinicians supporting students, staff and families right now, is unbelievable and unparalleled. I would also like to thank community partners who we cannot begin to thank enough. Child Guidance, Family Centers, Silver Hill Hospital, the Town of Darien HR Department, the Town of New Canons HR Department, members from the Thriving Youth Task Force, Sasko River Center clinicians, the Connecticut State Department of Education, DCF, DMS, and a number of other local town districts staff have supported us on both the ground and in the planning process in innumerable ways. I would like to end by saying that death by suicide in youth is extremely complicated. No one biological gene or neurological predisposition, personal interaction, school, community, classroom, family, substance or event causes a death by suicide. Rather, a complex interplay between some or many of these factors. In the wake of a tragedy, it is a natural human experience to want to seek understanding, to assign blame and to seek an immediate plan of action. In a death by suicide, we may never have understanding. In a death by suicide, no one thing can be to blame. And last, in a death by suicide, post-vention planning takes caring consideration and collaboration. These tragedies must bring us together. We must question before making judgments. We must learn together and we must plan thoughtfully together. To that end, I would like to introduce to you Dr. Jessica Welch, who is CEO and Clinical Director of the Child Guidance Center of Southern Connecticut and joined Community Health Center's leadership team when Connecticut Guidance Center became an affiliate in January of 2020. She continues to provide administrative and clinical leadership to child guidances programs that provide mental and behavioral health services to children, adolescents and family in lower fare-filled countering. Dr. Welch is also a clinical supervisor in APA accredited predoctoral psychology program, specializing in training interns and staff in risk assessment and crisis management, grief, trauma-informed care and group psychotherapy. For over 16 years, Dr. Welch's career has focused on crisis intervention and the treatment of trauma, beginning in, as a FEMA crisis counselor in New Jersey, providing in-home therapy for children and families impacted by the events at the World Trade Center on 9/11. She has been trained in several trauma-focused, trauma-specific evidence-based models of treatment, including cognitive processing therapy for PTSD, trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy and attachment, self-regulation and competency. Prior to her work at Child Guidance, Dr. Welch worked as a staff psychologist in a variety of clinical settings, including hospitals, school-based mental health and college counseling centers, and in private practice, conducting diagnostic assessments and providing psychotherapy to children, adolescents and adults with a wide range of mental health problems. Dr. Welch graduated from Tufts University with a BA in, in child development and earned her doctoral degree from the Graduate School of Applied and Professional Psychology at Rutgers, an esteemed program. She is a licensed clinical psychologist in Connecticut and New York. I invite you to welcome Dr. Welch, who is my personal 211 call, who beyond making every single thing we've needed to happen this week is a well-trained, informational and effective mental health leader in our area. Thank you, Dr. Welch.
Thank you, Dr. McCarthy. Welcome, Dr. Welch. We appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you, Scott, for your introduction and thank you to the board for having me here this evening. I'm sorry to be joining you under these circumstances and extend my heartfelt condolences to the families and loved ones impacted by the losses of these three young men over this short order and to the community as a whole. When Scott asked me to come and speak to you, it's because I unfortunately have had the experience of doing post-vention work over the last 10 years that I've been at Child Guidance more times than I share, I will care to remember, including a series of multiple losses in neighboring towns in short succession several years ago.
Dr. Welch, could I, could I ask you just to speak up a little more?
Sure. Is that any better?
Yes, thank you.
So I have had more experience in this area than I necessarily want to have had, but it's been part of what I do. necessarily want to have had, but it's been part of what I do in the role that I have at the Child Guidance Center. We often are asked to support communities when there is an untimely death of a student, whether that be by suicide or otherwise. And so part of what is common in these times is the immediate need, particularly not necessarily after the first loss because there's shock and sadness and an immediate sort of rallying around the students, but when there's been a series of untimely deaths of children, it can really shake and rock a community and it causes a large understandable and normal response in the population, whether that be people directly affected or just those that are nearby in proximity. So members of the community who are really looking for answers. Why did this happen? How could this happen? And it's very normal in the wake of an unexplained and particularly youth suicide where it doesn't make a lot of sense and it's very tragic experience, it's normal for us to want answers and to want to be called into action. And so what is happening, as Scott said in his laying out the plan, is right now what Darian High School is doing is exactly what it needs to do. And that is, we need to focus all energy on the acute phase of what to do right now to not just for the students, but also for the staff and the support people supporting the students in the school. And so the, all the activities that are happening over the course of this week with support from other providers in the community are designed to really help the, those directly affected by a series of untimely deaths to be able to restore some sense of normalcy. What we know about traumatic loss is that many of the reactions that kids and adults in the system, teachers, counselors, those that are in the school system are having are normal expected stress reactions to abnormal circumstances. And for the great majority of those that are struggling today and this week, many of them statistically will restore, return to normalcy very quickly, within a few weeks. And it's part of the thing, part of what it's our recommendation for the school is to try as much as possible to give students normal structure as quickly as possible while creating space for those that need additional support. As Scott talked about this being a cluster or a possibility of a cluster because of two suicides in short succession. There's also the need, as we're, I think the DHS counseling staff and the ancillary organizations that are supporting are doing, is being, is part of what you're creating is an environment where those that might be more vulnerable and at risk are have a space where they can be getting some support within the school that they might not otherwise have sought, but also it's an opportunity in all of the small groups and all of the conversations that are happening for those with concerns to have eyes on kids that may, they might have otherwise gone under the radar. So this acute phase is so critical and really demands almost all of our attention. And while I know that the board in conversation with Scott, I know that the board is looking for, what do we do now? And the community is looking for, how do we prevent this? There is an importance to doing postvention in the time that is the acute phase now through the end of the school year, beginning of the summer. And then moving into the, how do we prevent something like this going forward? And suicide prevention can't happen exactly at the same time as postvention, even though at this point in time, after two losses, there's a strong desire to get moving and get a plan going. So planning for that is part of what's happening now, but it really, my recommendation to this, to the district is to prioritize the acute phase postvention and then initiate the planning of a more comprehensive suicide prevention program that would be going forward. And that's sort of speaking to Scott's reference to establish protocols that exist to help districts and communities in the wake of more than one suicide to do both postvention and planning for more comprehensive prevention going forward. The other piece is that we are, I am part of suicide postvention to response teams in other surrounding towns. And in the pandemic, the rates of mental health and mental health needs for youth have dramatically increased. And so, and the state's recent legislation and the passing of the bill regarding children's mental health is a testament to the fact that children's mental health is definitely a crisis going on and there is no town that is escaping the impact of the last couple of years on our youth. There are a lot of things that exist that Darian will have the ability to replicate without much in new work needing to go into it. There's rubrics and and strategies and protocols that have been put in place by surrounding towns that will be made available and have been made available to Darian. Are where the strength of the community can come is you have an enormous abundance of resources within the community, but it's important that any sort of long-term postvention response team or any sort of long-term sort of forward-thinking plan of how to address what's happened, be a collaborative process with all key stakeholders in the community. Because I know that there's a lot of caring and committed individuals that are involved in different aspects, whether it be through the Board of Education or the town itself, the Health Department, or the number of wonderful organizations that support the community, like the Thriving Youth Task Force and the Community Fund. All of those folks are probably, and some may already be doing things or try mobilizing to try to do things. But it is important, in my experience, that all those in town really work together so that there isn't a duplication of efforts and that the entirety of the community, not just youth, but also the adults in the community, have those needs met as well. And the school is a prime key player in those conversations, but maybe isn't necessarily need to be the, the leader of those planned development, but a key participant in those discussions. And so my hope is that in speaking to you today, it is a, it is helpful to think about the plan for moving forward in these two very distinct ways. And that there is the need to kind of re, really focus currently on just getting kids and the adults in the school system, the support they need in the short term, and focusing on planning and really being thoughtful and collaborative going forward so that the future looks a little bit brighter, but also isn't detracting at all from the need for on-the-ground support right now. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Doctor Welch, thank you. Thank you very much. Just that that might be helpful. Just to summarize sort of succinctly in terms of some of the things that we heard. So the plan is for the immediate postvention, and a postvention was a new term to me prior to this, but that's the intense response between now, the end of the school year, the start of the, of the summer, and perhaps for the start of the next school year. So who would run that? Scott Nougass, who is the education consultant from the Connecticut State Department of Education. I also want to recognize the Commissioner of Education, who has been on the phone with me most of the weekend. And I appreciate her availability and her assistance in this. So Scott would be from the Department of Education. Yvette Cortez is the Program Manager for DCF that manages Connecticut Suicide Prevention Network. We would also have Andrea Duarte, who's the Program Manager for Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. So those three organizations would be coming in literally starting tomorrow to give guidance of postvention interventions to our crisis team at the high school. And so that would, they would be actually responding to what Dr. Welch just just mentioned. And then the other, the other intervention would be the long-term planning, whether it would be Youth Mental Health Task Force or another name that then would oversee moving forward on, on these bigger issues. And that could be, that's a collaborative effort, I would say, with the town and other officials. Is Dr. McCarthy and Dr. Welch, is that, is that, that's my understanding of our discussions thus far and so on. Is that correct or?
Yep, that aligns with, with I think how we think about it too. And I think what Dr. Welch also shared is that there are other local towns who have unfortunately gone through this and do have roadmaps for how those larger task force, task force to address postvisions in the future have come together. And so we've already initiated some of those contacts. It's like we're kind of planning our planning. So that's sort of a parallel track. We are putting all of our efforts into our postvention, our students, our staff, our faculty, our families, our community, and supporting them and also figuring out who has something that we can go look at. Let's go assess what that looks like because that will be a collaboration with town committees and, and community agencies to come together and actually create some type of, of larger planning process. Because I think what we've seen in at least from, from Dr. Welch's historical perspective, those committees work most effectively when they are not relegated to just the school system. That they, they require input from other town agencies because postvention exists for adults that have, that live in the community and, and it is sort of a necessary requirement that we include all those stakeholders in that planning.
Thank you, Dr. McCarthy. Thank you, Dr. Welch. What my initial question is, thank you very much. I mean, well succinctly said and Scott, Dr. McCarthy, sorry. Thank you for all that's gone on. Personally, I'm a little bit of a visual person. You talk about a roadmap, you talk about a plan. I don't want to waste time with a large deck or a presentation, but I think it would help the board and the community kind of seeing something that outlines exactly what you discussed at a high level. Because I think that would help continue to guide us and inform as we go forward and kind of a recapture of what you've done and kind of the plans between now, the school year and over the summer. Dr. Welch, I would ask you, and Dr. Adley went through a list of organizations and people that are helping us. We were on a call yesterday with Monica McNally, our first selectman and a bunch of other leaders through town. We talked through a task force type scenario. My question is, who's going to help herd all the cats, so to speak, to use an expression? Like, what do we need or what's recommended in terms of a facilitator? In terms of a professional that has whatever professional degree or knowledge that we need, you know, how do we coordinate all that at the top of the house?
So I can share my experience as being part of, I'm, I'm part of the Child Guidance is part of the Greenwich Suicide Postvention Response Team. And that work was initiated in Greenwich by the Chair Commissioner of the Department of Human Services. And so that, that, it was in their town, that is who took that kind of herd the cats role. The facilitators, the holder, the kind of organizer. And it was through the department, through the town, town took the step of contacting all the key stakeholder organizations in mental health, the school system, and sought and invited people to be part of the conversation. And then the task force kind of was created by people, chief of police, number of players and, and in the behavioral health space, the school space, the substance use space, the adult mental health world, because the town's approach was it's not just about when kids commit suicide, but it's also, it's sort of taking that town as an, the entire town taking a stance on suicide postvention and a coordinated effort. And it's helped largely, I think one of the things that was offered by when Greenwich was starting this work, there were towns further away in Connecticut who were more advanced and they shared all of their resources. And Greenwich is similarly offering to share all of their resources with other towns and sort of has the flow chart and the written materials and who's on the team and how, what does the team do and the needs assessment form that was created and everything of that nature. So I think there's been a lot of collaboration across towns around the state who are some more further along in their postvention task force planning. So it might be something that I know that Demetria McKenzie has offered and would to do that, to share any resources from Greenwich with any other town. And if Darian is interested in sort of giving some consultation about this is what we have done and here's what worked for us. And I am, I also understand that the city of Stanford has chosen to just adopt and adapt the Greenwich Plan to be, to replicate it as well, so that they also don't have to reinvent the wheel. So I think a lot of the groundwork is done. It's just a question of bringing the right stakeholders together in Darian to decide who wants to take ownership or a collaboration. And I will say, I believe in, along with this town, it's been Kids in Crisis and Greenwich has been the partner agency. So there might be similar sort of group that comes together in Darian to say, we will work together to be the people who initiate and take ownership for this type of thing. Should the city want, should the town want to pursue it that way?
Thank you for that. I, you know, I wouldn't doubt the ability of our health department at the town level for everything that they've done and guided us through and partnered with us through COVID. I guess, you know, my response would be they have a day job. And I, I honestly, and you may, you know, guide me here, I honest personally, we'll, we'll hear from the rest of the board. I, I see this as a full-time role initially. And maybe in the near term through the summer or the fall, I, I just, when I hear of the coordination and the amount of groups, and, and I don't doubt our ability to work and partner with the town and those community organizations. But I, I don't see that happening without someone focused one hundred and fifty percent of their time on this and our ability to execute it and do what we need to do as a town for our students and our families and our community. So I throw that out there. Other folks at the board will, will give their input, but your, your thoughts on that? I mean, that's how I really see it. And in talking to some folks and professionals, you know, it, it literally, it slanted more toward it would be best if you could have a resource totally dedicated this initially and, and to move it forward and do what. It's a lot of coordination. So I'll, I'll pause there.
You got wrong. It is a lot of coordination. That said, I think there's, you have a captive audience in community, in the community and partner organizations who we, we, places like Child Guidance and our Family Center, Kids in Crisis, that serve the community, who are, who have been doing this work. And so, so while for folks that this feels big too, and it is, I'm not minimizing the, the, the importance and the, and the gravity of what the town is facing. But I actually believe that because there's police and EMS and mental health providers that have the experience, that even having somebody be that point person because of those supports that will exist and all of those players will come to the table because their support, their, their key agencies that, that are active in the, in Darian, that those, that the person who takes on the role of coordinating may not have as big of a job as it seems, because there will be people who are at the table who have experience doing this because of the work that they're in. And so, so that's, that's my initial thought is optimally, would it be great if somebody had the time to devote full time to this? Sure. But I wouldn't necessarily say that it has to be delayed beyond to, till that person is identified, that there, there's a lot that can be done by the, with the power of collaboration.
Yeah, I wouldn't. I, I appreciate that. I wouldn't delay anything. And I also. I wouldn't, I appreciate that. I wouldn't delay anything. And I also worry about our existing. Whether it's town folks or whether it's Dr. McCarthy and the rest of the team, I worry about burnout. I worry about time and energy. And again, the day job of what they have to do to take care of kind of the existing students and roles that they have. So, all right, thank you. I'll open it up to board questions or first selectman McNally?
Thank you. So as Dr. Adley said, we did have a meeting yesterday. We had various stakeholders. So we had the police department. Sergeant Marone or Captain Marone and Chief, we had Dr. Adley, we had Jill, we had Post 53 represented. We had our, our public health people there. We had a pretty, a community fund was there. And I think that what the town is going to do is look to the community fund, the public, our, our. Human services and a representative from the school to start working on this task force idea. Because these are all groups that we see that are all doing things in their own area, whether it's the police helping the people that. You know, that respond to some of these calls or the posties or the human services with people that are coming to town hall for help or the school. So there is a lot of activity taking place. We're going to try to manage all of that and and coordinate it at this point. And I think that at this time, give this, give this group a chance to start doing some of this work. Reach out to Greenwich. This is a terrific idea. We will do that and and come up with a plan. I, I think that it's, you know, the, the postvention is important, but the planning going forward. We, we, we don't want to keep being in this same spot. So that, that would be my suggestion. And that's what we're working on on the town side. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Maroney?
On that, I guess, you know, you've mentioned a lot of public agencies. What if people have a private practice who want to get involved? Is there a way for them to, to do that? Or how does, how would that work?
You know, our, our human services has. Recognized a couple of different firms in town, different services, one that actually takes. Has appointments available right now and does take insurance. So incorporating those, those facilities, absolutely. You know, I don't think we're in the private partner, you know. Situation right now. We're still really collecting information, informing kind of our overall, this is like a new endeavor for us. So that's a little bit further down the line.
More of just someone who has expertise, but maybe in a private role as opposed to a public role who wants to serve on the task force. How would they try to get involved?
I think you're, I think you're a, a great question. I, I think that's a question is the task force forms together. I think that's something you would absolutely look at because the conversation at the first selectman meeting and the conversation last night. Was about the lack of resources and healthcare and people trying to get appointments. So I think it's a good point. I appreciate that, Monica, and I, I would hope my goal in, in talking about a resource or facilitator is not to delay. Or stall anything. I, I would hope that as a group of people or task force comes together. That if they see a need for an additional resource or a facilitator, that that should come out of the formation and the start of that work group. I'm not convinced personally that we don't need some type of facilitator or coordinator. But it's not to take away from any of the work or the, the organizations that we have that will be part of this. So, thank you. Mrs. Parent.
Thanks, Duke. I'm, I'm just going to echo what you're saying. I, I think, and I'm not, I'm not disparaging the. Expertise of anybody in our, in our health department or currently, you know, serving our town. But I do, I do think we need really expert opinion here. And I think we need to really think about who is leading us in this. Really, there's nothing more important than this right now. And I think we really need to have some really experienced expertise. Creating this task force. I also didn't hear any mention of teachers being involved in this and the educators that are with our, our children. Seven hours a day that really may potentially know even more about our children than we do. I think it's really, it's imperative that we have those with the boots on the ground, spending the majority of our day, of their day with our children. Be included because, you know, children don't necessarily tell us what they're thinking and they, they really. I, I just think we need to be sure that we have the right people. Working forward. And I just want to extend my incredible gratitude to Dr. Wel for her expertise and Dr. McCarthy. For your, for your comments. I have a lot more to say, but I will let other people go.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mrs. Akman?
So I think Mr. Seni had a.
Sorry. If you bear with me, I, I took notes during all the public comment and the experts and others that spoke. And I just wanted to regurgitate because we're all new to this challenge. And so basically what I heard tonight, this is a crisis in Darien. Mental health calls among teens have dramatically increased as a result of the pandemic. Mental health wellness is an intersecting community issue which needs a unified response. Teachers and students need more than crisis response, but also require ongoing services and resources that have become a fabric to this community. Over the near term, we must keep the eyes on any kids that may fall under the radar. This community has a captive audience with tremendous resources and experts with expertise, with experience. However, we must implement foundational programs with great care, consideration and collaboration. Including the entirety of the community is critical. The schools are a primary player, but can't be expected to be the only solution. Other towns unfortunately can provide a roadmap for us. So I guess the question is, did I miss anything in, in those comments to the two experts? Because I think it's critical that we're all on the same page and we summarize and this isn't meant to be a mission statement. But yeah, again, we're embarking on something we've never done before.
Right. And I think what you hit on is, is. Is, is the most important point. The, the reason by that a student would die by suicide. Is complex. And so the response must be complex. If it's not one reason that's a cause, you can't solve one problem. So that requires all of these stakeholders. Dr. Wel was kind enough when we were talking yesterday. One of probably 20 times yesterday to invite me to the Greenwich. Postvention Response Team meeting this morning, they meet monthly. And I, and I. I was, you know, heeding the advice to focus on postvention right now. But the opportunity for the fact that the meeting was happening once per month and it was happening today. Had to set aside that hour and go to it to see what it looked like. And what I was struck by was that the, the chair of the meeting being the, the Department of Human Resources, the chairperson from Human Resources. Was facilitating the meeting, but every single person on the committee, that wasn't large, maybe 15 people or so were there today, including Dr. Wel. A lot of friendly faces on there from family centers and kids in crisis, you know, people who we've worked with and went off on situations before. Every single person on that committee had the ability to say yes or no to, to a resource allocation. And, and so that when that committee convened, there's a police chief that can say yes or no. There is the emergency response services can say yes or no to something, has information. Family centers, child guidance, kids in crisis, every single person has access to a resource. And when that committee convened and they go through their flow chart of what they're going to do. Each person has an action that they can take. And that seems to me to be an effective postvention response in a crisis. And so I think it's worth looking at what, what have other people, I mean, after the meeting, they said, do you want us to send you the flow chart? And I said, no, Dr. Wel said, go back to postvention. Yes, I watch your flow chart, but that, that's in a few weeks when we have time to start a value meeting moving forward to long-term planning. But I think it's worth looking at, what, what other towns have, they've done this. The Child Health Development Initiative, CHDI in Connecticut, does work consulting with teams to help develop these postvention response teams. Some of the postvention response teams are specific to death by suicide. Some of the postvention response teams are crisis response teams. So they have both different functions. And the, and in the towns that they're in, the towns are designed in different ways. So it's important to look at what have people done. But also what, what's important and what needs to be there in our town and what already exists. So I, I, I'm sure our, our, our Human Resources Department has protocols and procedures around some of these things. How do we make that cohesive into a, a task force that includes all of the stakeholders? That's not too large, not too small, but that can address the goals. Of this community, which I think is important. It's, it's, it's community specific. So I had this one experience today, but I, I think it's worth looking, doing a little bit of a needs assessment as we also explore what already exists.
Thank you, Dr. McCarthy. Mrs. Akman?
So, thank you. And I, I do think the suicide prevention will be important, but I am a little. Focused on the postvention and the acute phase, which I think we're still in. And I think it is. From my understanding, a small window in which a lot of work needs to be done. And I think that what I'd liked to hear, and you may not have the plan, but I would like to make sure the administration is thinking about it. I think we have another inflection point coming later this week with a service. I was at the vigil, it was very comforting and highly emotional for children. I think that we would probably expect that. It is during the school day. What does that look like for kids? What does Friday look like? How do kids process what they, what re grieving or, or still being in the process of grieving? And I am not an expert in this field, so I apologize if I'm using any wrong terms. But I think later this week is another intense emotional moment, if, if there hasn't been. And I think as a school district, and I agree, we are one piece in the puzzle. But if we could focus on our piece or just know that the administration has a plan for how to deal with that, I think it would be key. I think grief is interesting. Grief can be inclusive, grief can be exclusive. If you see people grieving and you're not part of the group, what does that mean about you? And I think this is impacting our kids in a lot of ways. I, I will say, and I usually do try to avoid anecdotal stories. But this has hit sophomore and junior classes and, and the diaspora of the kids this has hit is pretty wide. So I've unfortunately had the chance to talk with some of them and. There are, or fortunately have the chance to talk with them because they want to talk, but about an unfortunate subject. There is a feeling of, we talk, but then we go back to class and that dichotomy is really, really hard. How do I bear all my feelings one period and then go do, I'm not picking on any subject matter, my classwork the next? And I hear the need for normalcy. I just think that we really need in this acute phase to have a tight plan. You know, I don't know what that looks like for academics. I just know we have a lot of kids grieving, a lot of loss. I imagine the news events of today, and if there's a police presence on school tomorrow. Could have the potential to increase anxiety. So. I just would ask the administration to have a very tight, comprehensive plan. I know, I, I think only in my capacity as a former chair and I will pass them on to Mr. Janina. Other school districts have reached out to me, offering to send counselors or resources. And if we need them, we should take them because our kids need it right now. And, and I don't know that. And we never planned this. They don't need a thousand-person assembly. They need care. And I don't know that they will seek it out. I think the adults might have to prompt them to. So that's a long soliloquy based on what I'm feeling and seeing, but I think this acute phase. Really needs some, some high-touch tension. And that's not to take away of all the intention. That happened this weekend, but I think Thursday and Friday are days we really need a plan for.
And I think, so Dr. McCarthy, I would, I would ask and Dr. Adley and Dr. Wel, anything to add? Like what, at a high level, what is the plan for Thursday? There's a service at one Presbyterian church. Your Friday before Memorial Day weekend, which is usually a time of fun and excitement. You're in this home stretch to graduation. It's the kickoff of summer, like, high level, what's the plan?
So. The, the concern you presented is the exact challenge that we're experiencing. The same action that we take for a group. Or one student can have a positive impact and for another can have a negative. And then when we look at that for 1,400. It's challenging. And so the, so, so we look at big picture guidance and then we apply it to what we know about Darien. And we apply it to what we know about our students. And then we apply it to what we know about targeted groups of students. And then we try to make the best decisions in consultation with experts. And that's challenging. So. Just like we heard from students X was helpful today, we heard from other students, I can't talk about this anymore. I want, I want to go to class. And, and so the same thing resulted in a different outcome for different students. And then, and then it's hard sometimes to predict. For which student? Will that be the case? What, for which student is this triggering from a past event? Or which student are they not saying something, but it has been triggering and they're not sleeping? And they would just like to go through their school day. So, so we try to balance normalcy with accommodation, choice. And, and, and kind of using those, those, those bigger frameworks for how we think through, how do we make decisions about things? So we have plans in the works to. To try to respond to the student requests for their need to gather, which we know the guidance suggests is, is, is not advisable in large settings. So to try to facilitate their need to gather in a way that is advisable. We're creating structured choice group options. So students will be able to leave. To, 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 as opposed to in the first few days when we had to kind of group them by their schedule. To be able to say, this group of students can select to come together. In, in a space with a mental health provider, a crisis counselor, somebody who understands grief. And work together in that way so that there's still a, a, the ability to gather what you know students want and it's healthy. But also has a facilitator and a person who can monitor what's being said and help with the follow-up process. So we know Thursday will be challenging and we still have work to do around the planning for that as we've become knowledgeable of the finalization of those plans. Friday has another challenge. We, we have a, a typical experience that happens. That's a large group event on Friday at the school. So we've had a number of conversations about how, how does that, it's already a large experience. And, and how can we respect the guidance, but also respect the normalcy of that is what we do. With that event and respect the lives of, of, of these beloved students. So, so it's navigating all of that. And, and so I don't have necessarily perfect answers as to what we've come to, to, to decisions on. But we were continuing to seek guidance from, from those people, those three individuals in the state, people like Dr. Welts. And the other consultants that we're working with to say, here's some ideas, let's think about this, let's think about this. And also thinking about, okay, now we've watched how students have responded to the things we've planned for Monday, Tuesday. Now let's incorporate that feedback into our planning as well.
So just one quick follow-up on that. Let someone ask questions. I guess. I would just ask, and this may or may be in the works, understanding grief hits at different points. The rest of the school year, kids could hit grief at certain points. So whatever the appropriate level of kind of. I mean, everyone's heard me talk about voice and choice before, but. Some conceptual understanding that some of these kids, it might hit them in two weeks, it might hit them in three. And, and some, and making sure there's a common understanding among the, the staff, quite frankly, that they have the right to understand that kids are affected at different points. And it might kind of come out really differently than we would expect. So.
And not to overstep my. You know, you know, my role in this, but. You know, Principal Don met with Department of Counsel today to start looking at proposals for what, what do assessments look like? That's a big question. Students want to know. I, I'm not feeling prepared to be able to study right now. I'm not able to think about this. My mind is elsewhere. I have other, other responsibilities right now. And so the purpose of that meeting today was to go through here are what our current recommendations are. Let's get feedback based on your content areas from your, from your staff, because we don't want to make a decision that doesn't make sense for your staff. So it, it, again, striking that balance of creating normalcy about school and, and a reason to attend your classes. But also not having high stakes pressure. And, and so more information from that will, will certainly come in the days.
Thank you.
In the coming days from, from Mrs. Doug.
And thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Dr. Good. Mrs. McKinnon?
I want to start by saying thank you to the school system and town folks as well. But in the context of this conversation, the school system for asking for help from the experts. That's one of the conversations. in the context of this conversation, the school system for asking for help from the experts. That's one of the conversations we have is the importance of asking for help. There's so much in life we don't know how to do. And one of the things we want to model for our kids is you don't have to know, you can ask. And this is a critical time. So thank you for that. I am very confident to know that we have asked others and and I understand a lot better what there's there's a level of specificity we're we'll still talk about, but I understand a lot better. Dr. Adley, we were talking briefly the other day and you mentioned that that maybe it'd be a good idea to put this on the agenda, sort of a mental health as just sort of a regular update. So I'm stealing your your idea. But you know, this is a long, big conversation. So I I think it's something I would love to see us carry out over time so that we don't have to get it all out in in a short period of time that we could, as appropriate, keep it going. So I have something else, but I lost it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinnon. Olivia.
So I am brought here to this board to represent the student perspective. And in the continuation of this discussion, I really want to do that. First, I want to point out to the board that the senior class, aside from receiving the email that went out to all students about what would be happening during the school week as a procedure, have received none of the counseling or supports that the underclassmen have received, despite the fact that many of them knew the students that were lost and also could this could be a triggering event for any students who have personally lost someone, especially because the senior class experienced a loss last year. And so I want that to be considered, that we haven't received the same supports. And Dr. McCarthy mentioned the concerns with students around finals. And because I haven't been in school experiencing the same counseling, I've talked to a lot of sophomores and juniors about how they felt about what happened on Monday and how it was handled. And multiple students said to me that they feared that they were going to have to, quote, put their emotions on the back burner to prepare themselves for exams. So as we are in this meeting and talking about the environment that we are creating for our students, and after we heard parents and students talk about how our school has become a pressure cooker, I ask you to think about the fact that instead of processing their own grieving emotions right now, students are worried about how their own emotions are going to impact their academics. And if that our community prioritizing academics has now led to our students not prioritizing their own mental health. Students also expressed to me that they felt teachers and staff members were underprepared in that their response was not uniform. Some students had teachers doing regular lessons, lesson plans. Some teachers had were giving free periods. Some teachers were having class discussions. And students felt like they were being bounced around from experience to experience with no consistency. And that is part of the reason that they didn't feel comforted throughout the day. Additionally, coaches and sports teams also weren't given a uniform response. Some people didn't have sports practices or games. Some people went forward with it. So students didn't know going into Monday what they were going to be facing. I know some students chose not to go on Monday because they felt that the response wouldn't be comprehensive. And I'm I urge the board to consult and listen to student feedback as we're moving forward approaching the mental health question. Because while some students won't be reaching out and asking for help, the students that will are trying to show you that there is a problem that needs to be addressed. And I also want you to consider from the student perspective that most students aren't watching these meetings. Most students don't see the process behind the scenes. All the considerations that go into how they are being counseled, they only see the product. And what they know right now is that the product is not enough and it is not comforting them. And that's what I want the board to consider.
Thank you, Olivia. Thank you very much. Additional board questions, Warren? Mr. Maroney.
And thank you, Olivia. This is a very powerful statement. And I think to echo Jill and everyone here is, again, thank you for all the work you've done. I it pains me to say that we're in a a death by suicide cluster. It's it's really difficult to say and comprehend even. And, you know, I don't, I can't imagine having to deal with this as as your full time job and part of your your day to day. It's it's difficult enough sitting here. But Terry, you brought up a point to me of of this inflection point of this week. To me, there's another inflection point, and that's the end of the year. And where did where do we end with school and school ends? Are we done with the students? Or do we have a plan to then continue on during the summer where? You know, again, I was listening to the gentleman last night. He said, you know, his son actually had the best week of his of his junior year and then, you know, and died by suicide later that week. And so I'm concerned that, you know, the the students will have normalcy and be in their community during school, and then they get out of school during the summer and they don't have their community. And what does that look like? And where is the support for them during the summer?
So I would hasten to say that that would be the charge of of that continued postvention work with the three agencies to advise us on that. I I started tonight saying that I'll be apologetic that some of the questions I won't, we won't have answers for. We, the administration planned for the first couple of days and with the advice of these three state agencies, we'll we'll plan for the next couple of days and the weeks ahead and the start of the summer.
Mrs. Ackman.
So I would I would just add that I I think, and the experts can tell me if I'm wrong, but to echo Mr. Maroney's point that this is really a wraparound for these kids right now. And it might be a pretty tight wraparound in our in our postvention. But as as their lives change or, you know, going off to college is an inflection point that sometimes causes stress, like we need a community wraparound, whatever that looks like. We need to recognize that the schools aren't everywhere, but the community is. And whether that's the community fund or coaches or or programs really coming up with great language and maybe the the crisis team can help us with that to kind of say, hey, here's where our kids are at, you know, as you start your summer camp or you start this, please know that as you receive them this year, it's a different place than maybe they've been before, or maybe maybe we're being forced to acknowledge a new a new place that they're at. But maybe that's the wraparound effect, because I do think that loss of structure can it would feel like maybe that could be another inflection point as well.
I think I appreciate them as like everything we've talked about. Folks, I've talked about conversations with Dr. Adley and all this. There is, there needs to be a summer plan. And I think that'll be part of it. And whether, you know, the town empties out from a vacation standpoint, or with COVID and travel and everything else, more people stay locally. I think we'll need to assess that almost on a weekly basis to see what the potential needs are. The other thing I I would just throw out there, and and I know got some feedback and some folks have said stuff, but just I'd like to also hear, not necessarily this evening, but as you build this plan out and come back to us, like the the ele- the middle school and the elementary school. You know, I think the feedback I've gotten is the announcement at the middle school just again caused kind of unintended consequences as to how people felt that was delivered. And, you know, led to a lot of questions that maybe folks weren't necessarily prepared to answer, whether it's at the staff level or at the teacher level. So in the professionals I've spoken to, there's degrees of how this moves down into a middle school and to an elementary school. Maybe at a fifth grade level is very different than when you go down to the fourth grade and the first grade. So I think that that needs to be a component of it. Mrs. Klein. I guess I just can't, I can't move my eyes quick enough. Thank you, Mrs. Klein.
That plans are already in the works going downwards. We found that the the parent presentation Monday night was well received. Parents found that the the language that they were provided to enter to some of these conversations was helpful. And so we had considered actually inviting middle school parents as well and thought we should keep the developmental level high school for now. But we're already in the works to to move that downward to middle school to to a developmental level that would be appropriate and continue that work with Tom and Mary right now.
Thank you. Mrs. Worm.
Okay, I'm going to have to express my frustration here a little bit. And I'm going to echo some of the things Olivia said. We've been hearing from students, I know that either coming to the board or within our own lives, that there isn't enough being done, that there isn't enough resources. We, I've been asking to see what's going on and we haven't seen it. I've realized we're in crisis mode and I hate that we are in crisis mode. But we also have to look at, once we get through crisis mode, what are the resources available to the students? Because they're telling us they're not enough. And if we look to other towns, we are not doing what they're doing. So I really don't want to see this be, everyone, let's come together in crisis mode and and congratulate everyone for, you know, doing a good job and then drop the ball and not continue and make sure we're doing what we need to do for our students and our community.
Thank you, Mrs. Worm. Mrs. Perrin.
I just wanted to echo a little bit of what you're, you actually stole my thunder a little bit about the middle school, because I mean, I know, I know that there are middle school students in crisis as well. And I I know that there are tremendous resources at the middle school, but how do we develop mentally? How is it developmentally appropriate that we empower the middle school students and the elementary school students to ask for help when they need help? I I think that that's definitely something that we need to be focused on. I also think that how do we support? It's the act of the airplane masks or the oxygen mask in the airplane. How do we support the teachers and the staff? And how do we ensure that they are mentally healthy? Because if they're not mentally healthy, that they don't have to support. How are they going to then support our children? So are we doing all we can to support that population within our buildings as well? And to Dr. McCarthy's point about parents, that's another segment of of our community that we really need to help educate. I think parents are are terrified, rightfully so. How can we best talk with our children? And if our children are not going to talk to us, how do we open the door to have the conversations that need to be had? I think we need to empower parents with the correct language, with the with how many resources we actually have. Our district is rich with resources. We just need to know how to access them. We have incredible people working with our children. And we would need to know how to access them. So whether that's a communication issue, which, you know, we've talked about in the past, but I don't want to say that we're we we're not, we don't have enough. I think we don't know how to access what we have.
So thank you, Mrs. Perrin. I will tell you that that communication has already begun as of yesterday. And emails going back and forth between the first selectman's office, Dr. McCarthy's involved, myself, the community fund in doing an inventory and assessment of all our resources. And then figuring out from a communication standpoint, whether it's a broad communication, whether it's an update to our website, the town website, like, how do we make sure everyone knows and sees what the resources are? Believe it or not, driving around today, I actually had a thought, if we need to take out a newspaper page and and publicize what the resources are, I think we need to think outside of the box and get the information out there. So thank you. Mrs. Best.
Thank you. Two things. The first is, I I thank you to everybody for starters, for all the hard work here. For our students or faculty that aren't taking advantage of the resources we're making available, do we have enough resources on hand to have eyes on people or to have eyes on enough people, enough times to to possibly identify if anybody looks like they're struggling but isn't going to look for help now and into the future? Secondly, just another idea in the mix, I did participate in the mental health first aid training last week along with Ms. Worm. I think we both agree it was incredibly valuable and empowering and would absolutely recommend that we do what we can to make it available to as many people in district and in town as possible, because it it's very helpful with how to approach a student, a situation, an individual language to use, how to create an opportunity to help that person without exacerbating a situation. I I really thought it was incredibly well done, and I think it would be well received by our faculty and 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 useful.
Yeah, the faculty actually okay, the the faculty actually asked for that and we are, we are going to do that. We will end if if I have any sense or informed that we need additional resources, believe me, I'll be back here. Look, ask them for those resources.
Mrs. Ackman.
So as a board, right? We decide resources. That's one of the areas where we can actually make change and take action, right? And that's been some of the frustration, I think, in the wake of us trying to understand where we can take action. And I think if you look at resources, there's a couple of different ways to look at it, right? There's capacity, there's utilization, there's realization. They're all different concepts. And so for what the world looked like twenty years ago, we didn't need as many psychologists. We had the right resources. When we debated psychologists, an extra psychologist, and it was hotly debated, people were saying, why do you need more resources? I don't know that if respectfully, if it's that we have enough or we have too little, the question is, what resources do we have? And are they meeting the needs that we're experiencing? And I think that's a fair question. I think that's a question that's worth review and and hearing from, you know, our guidance department, our special education department, our our psycho- our psychologists, our social workers. What we thought we had two years ago is a different experience than we're having now. So maybe we need more indifferent, and that's okay. Again, I I think this is where we have to be really smart and thoughtful to like what we're doing is is filling unfortunate holes. So I don't know that we should debate if we have enough or we don't have enough, other than let's look at how how stressed our resources are. And maybe we can make a decision of whether to add more, because that's real work we can do as a board. And maybe part of that is talking to kids, because not all kids will walk into the guidance department, even though they're the friendliest, most welcoming people in the world. Maybe we need a different type of resource where kids feel more comfortable. And I don't know what that is, right? I have nothing but faith in our psychologists, social workers, guidance counselors. But maybe we can give them more tools. The only other concern I've had when we talk about resources is when we say, let's give teachers more training. The number of tools we're expecting them to carry around in their toolbox. They're supposed to teach special ed or chemistry or tech and know how to handle mental health. So again, maybe to Mrs. Worm's point, while we could say we have enough resources, those resources are maxed, so we still need more. And and I and I think that's a fair kind of analysis to do that doesn't place any blame, but says we can always, can we do better for our kids? So if we go down a resource route, that's how I'd like to look at it. What's the capacity? What's their utilization? And, you know, what can we do so they're not burning out either? Because I think the well being of our teachers and what we ask of them really has to be part of this conversation as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Dr. Well.
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in if it was okay, just to make two points. And I'm hearing a lot of you talking about that there is this strong need wanting to figure out how to do something. And hearing Olivia talking about the students' responses and how they're feeling. No matter what training your guidance, social work and psychologist staff have, more often than not, they're not really prepared for this. And and that is why there are experts and that is why there are people who have this experience. And so this isn't preparing for how to respond in the wake of an untimely death of a student is not part of general mental health education. It's just not part of anyone's training. It is a really specialized niche service. And so you speak a lot about feeling like the needs of the students and the needs of the community resources are maybe not what is needed. And that's where sort of the community kind of rallies around schools to try to meet that need and plug in the holes. But I think the other piece is, what's happening in these days is not going to look the same as what's going to happen in two weeks or three weeks. And I tried to say earlier, when something like this happens, it is very normal for people, adults and children, to have very strong reactions, cognitive changes, social changes, emotional changes, physiological changes. Those are very common acute reactions that many of us, maybe in this room, also are experiencing or seeing in our children. But also, most people who are impacted are resilient. But also, most people who are impacted are resilient and they will return to normalcy. And so the percentage of people who have lasting impact from this is very much lower than those that we're seeing who need help right now. And so to assess resources at a time now isn't going to give you an accurate perception of what you need in the long term. Because this situation is unique and, and acute. And ongoing resources might look very different and the need for ongoing resources might look very different. So that was one. And the second is something to consider is school social work, school psychologists, they have a very distinct role in the district and in schools in general that are, that's very much related to special education departments. And there isn't always, in guidance, there isn't always the time or the ability to do distinct mental health treatment. And for that reason, Jerian may want to consider pursuing or, or entertaining the possibility of looking into school-based health centers. These are, these are behavioral health that are mental health therapy separate from the school, but embedded in schools. So kids can get therapy services during their school day. They have access, it's a support to the district. But it, it, these people are specifically embedded in schools in order to meet the mental health needs. They don't have the competing priorities and competing demands that guidance counselors, school social workers and school psychologists have. So when you're considering what options there are for the long term, school-based health centers might be something to, for the board to consider.
Thank you, Dr. Well. I don't want to cut off or take away from any of the conversation here, but we're beyond the 10 o'clock mark. We've got to go to executive session. We have our friend, colleague here, Mr. Mooney, that's part of that. A lot of good discussion and, you know, I posed to the board too, as we kind of recap, I think, the conversation and what we want to see from the district. And most importantly, we want to understand what do you need and how can we help? And that Dr. Adley and myself will continue to work with First Selectman McNally and the other community leaders to organize around, you know, how this looks and what do we need? And, and we really want to understand the resource issues. So, you know, in some ways, I'm also thinking, do we need another meeting next week to continue to focus and give the administration time to come back to us? I need to see visually a little bit of a plan. I don't want you to take away from what you're doing. And there's stuff, maybe you can bring in from other districts that just shows us a little bit of a timeline. I also want to respect knowing you, you'll be at the high school tomorrow at 6:00 AM, continuing the work that you're doing. So I just want to take that into consideration this evening. John, I know you had your hand up. I appreciate your patience.
Cool. I thought I had to stop. Okay.
John, your mic.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I got so excited, I almost forgot. I just wanted to say that I have been in, I've taken part in a lot of conversations after names day and kind of continually. One of the things that a lot of students and faculty have said is that advisory could kind of be a place to do that. But going forward in the future, maybe looking at a way to kind of possibly change the way the advisory is structured to make it more meaningful could have a positive impact. Because I know one, one of the things that students have said to me is that the way that advisory is structured now is that students are kind of assigned to a random group of people within their grade, which just not necessarily promote a lot of conversations, because you have no idea who, who, who those people are. And, you know, you probably don't share any, any interests with them. So one of the things that they had said is maybe there's some way that we can like, going forward, kind of, not necessarily like, you know, sort, because I know Harry Potter vibes, you know, with like a sorting hat, but kind of some sort of like, I'm not sure if it's like a, taking some personality quiz with like, like INTJ, like the, the 16 personality types, or some sort of survey with like, what activities are you interested in? Just so we can better sort the advisories at DHS going forward. So that way, students can have a group that's more close to that way, they might have an additional way of kind of having a support network. And I was also thinking, I kind of, I've had a lot of things floating around lately. And one of the things I was thinking about is I know that at the middle school level, they have that flex meets every day. So I know that DHS is simultaneously in conversations about changing possible, like the, the block schedule and whether it works and whether it doesn't work. And I know that's, it's far too late to change anything for next year. But one of the things that I was thinking about is if we could do some sort of hybrid model where the classes that benefit from a two-hour thing every other day can have that. So like two, two big blocks and four little blocks or something like that. Then one of the little blocks could be an everyday kind of advisory slash mental health slash thing that kind of goes more in depth than the kind of one advisory every somewhat days. So I don't know.
Thank you for your thoughts, John. Appreciate you. So any other quick board questions or comments? All right. So I think to, to recap, thank you all. Dr. McCarthy, Dr. Well, thank you very much for participating this evening and for all the hard work that's been done over the last couple of days and there's more to do. I would say let us know what you need over the next couple of days. I think we'd very much like to see and be part of the communication that goes out and how we're handling Thursday and Friday. I think we'd like to see some type of high-level plan or timeline. How do we get through to the end of the year? What resources you may or may not need? I think there's been some good questions posed about, you know, how are we utilizing the resources we have? I will tell you, folks have reached out to me about provide, providing resources if we need them, I'm sure. If Dr. Adley's contacts throughout the state, that's possible too. So anything else anyone wants to add from a recap standpoint? All right. Good. And then I'll, I'll get a sense from the board and, and as you all move forward, if we need to put another meeting on the calendar to continue the conversation and, and make sure we're getting the right updates and we feel good about all the progress that's being made. So thank you. All right.
Dr. Well and Dr. McCarthy, thank you very much for your, for your time and expertise.
Thank you both. Thank you, Dr. Well.
Thank you.
We'll, Michelle, we'll move back quickly to public comment.
Anyone in person?
Anyone in person?
Please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment.
Julie Funachil, 23, Fitch Avenue. I just wanted to implore you guys as your moving board with this task force and these plannings to make sure that you're formally including the student voice. I think you see tonight how important it is. And as Tim Miller was speaking about, there seems to be a disconnect, right? Where you plan these programs, you think they're very great and they're very well received, and then they're not. So I just wanted to implore you all to make sure you're formally including student voices, what your working board is planning. And the second point I wanted to make to Mrs. Parent's comment about the teachers. I am a friend and colleague of somebody who, when Sandy Hook went back to school, she was an embedded psychiatrist, psychologist, devoted purely to the staff. That was her sole purpose was to be there for the staff. And so I just wanted to make that as a suggestion to think about and put into your toolkit.
Thank you. Thank you. Michelle, anyone on Zoom?
Carolina Magui, you are unmuted and recognized. Please give the video a moment to start.
Hi, everyone. I hope you can hear me. I just wanted to thank you all for tonight. It's been tremendous. And I wanted to remind you as well that we have some students that might be out this week due to COVID. I know we have a large contingent of students that are still out because of COVID. So make sure you include them in whatever resources you are providing in school for those students as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Michelle, on Zoom?
Username Daniel. Oh, will we go in person?
Daniel, can you hear us? Can you see us?
Yeah. Hi, this is Cynthia Adams. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. Your, your address, please.
Okay, I'm Cynthia Adams. I live at 49 Red Rose Circle. I wanted to thank everybody for the meeting tonight. And, and I wanted to just share a couple of things that I wanted the board to consider. There is, Main Medical Center has a program called the Peer Program. And it was started by psychiatrist Dr. William McFarlane. And his work centered on children, young adults and families getting help together. And, and it, it's program has grown and, and it's really focused on now peers helping peers. And one of the things I'm hearing from the students is that hearing, there's, there's, their voices are strong. They know what they feel, they know what they need. They know, they have very clear reactions. And I urge the board to consider as we go forward, the idea of a, some kind of a routine or consistent panel where students are talking to students about their own own feelings, own feelings of suicide, whether they've been through whatever treatment or however they've, they've processed it. But hearing that from, from a student is, I, I think, very powerful for our children to hear that there are other, there, there are other trajectories, there are ways to go through really bad times and to have incredibly emotionally difficult periods in life, but also to, to get through them. And I, I'd like the board to at least consider that program and I can send that information. I think it's, I think it would be powerful for the, for the students. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Anyone else?
There are no, oh, I'm not sure if someone in person?
I just want to say one more thing. I'm going off script, so anything can happen here. So Vegas rules. I guess not run camera. Roland Plow again, Fort Duffy's Lane. Listen, I feel the weight that you all, I can just feel it in you. The pain, the fear and I know that this is a complex problem on the surface, but there's also a part of it that is very simple. And I, and don't let the complexity overwhelm you. Don't let that fear take root. You need to be bold and you need to take risks. I was dropped into a school in Bridgeport, February 2021, having never worked in a school in one of the most violent parts of the city. My job was to work with de-escalation of violence, help kids repair harm they caused, resolve conflict. It was intense. I did over 500 formal interventions in a year with no school experience. And, and the job was about feeling trauma and knowing it when I saw it. And I think that that's one of the most important tasks in front of us is to, is to just drop our guard, be vulnerable, something that's very hard sometimes for people who enjoy power and, and can get things done and feel inclined to just solve problems. Drop your guard, listen to people, particularly students. My own daughter echoed what you said and Miller said the same thing earlier. This is what they're feeling right now. They're overwhelmed because right now their school is not a safe place for them. Think of it in those terms. Our job is to make school a safe place. You can define it that simply and build off of that. And safety for a child means feeling valued, feeling seen, feeling like they belong. And when they're excluded, they don't feel like they belong. They don't feel like they're a priority. So take it to just a simple human level, the same way you speak to your own kids. And don't let the gravity of this overwhelm you, because it's heavy. But our kids are going to show us the way if we just take their cues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, are we all set on Zoom?
There are no more raised hands?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all that have attended the meeting this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussion of negotiations pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1206B, discussion of non-affiliated employees' salaries pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1206A, and interviewing director of facilities candidate pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1206A. Mrs. McCammon, second by Mr. Maroni. All those in favor? Thank you.